Pastor Turner. Pastor Turner.
I got it this time. To the mayor and city council and to the residents of Allen Park, let's bow our heads and pray. Almighty God, we come before you this evening and like the shepherd boy David, who slew a lion and a bear and a giant named Goliath and then came on to be the second king of ancient Israel. He penned the words in Psalm 121, "I look to the hills which cometh my help; my help cometh from the Lord." And God, this evening, we look to you, the wonderful cities across this land, the fifty states that make up this one great nation, for the legislative bodies, the judicial bodies, and the executive branches of our governments, Lord, from the federal to our states, to our cities, and even this city, Lord God, Allen Park, and our dear Madam Gail McLeod. We ask your blessings. We ask for your favor. Please smile upon us. In the name of Almighty God, we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. So, clerk, we'll take the roll, please. All right, so unfortunately, Mr. Mizzi is out today, so I'm sitting in his place. Also, Dan Lloyd has to be excused. Councilman Schleck?
Present.
Councilman Barr?
Here.
Also, Councilman Marcos has to be excused. Councilman Valerius?
Here.
Mayor Protem Nick?
Here.
And Mayor Gail McLeod?
Here.
Madam Mayor, we have a quorum. Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the agenda for this evening?
Motion, Mayor.
Motion by Mr. Valerius?
Second.
Second by Ms. Nick. Any changes? Hearing not all, in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the agenda is approved. May I have a motion to approve the minutes from the regular meeting on January 28th?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Barr?
Support.
Supported by Mr. Schleck. Any corrections to those minutes? Hearing not all, in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That's our approved organizational business. We will start out with the city treasurer, Mr. Astheimer.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, council, citizens. Tonight, I'm going to talk about my favorite subject, which is taxes, yes. As a reminder, all taxes, summer deferment and winter, all city taxes are due by law this Friday, February 14th, to the city. Taxes paid after that date will incur a 3% penalty. Taxes may be paid with penalty until February 28th to our city. The first window, right out here in City Hall, is where you're going to pay those taxes generally, or the first two windows if it's marked. On March 1st, all delinquent taxes will be sent to the county for collection. They sort of make us whole again, reimburse us why they collect those taxes on our behalf. And they will only be able to be paid at the county from that point. So, if possible, please try to get here by the end of the month. You'll have that extra penalty over by the 14th without penalty to save you a trip to the county. Now, things will be a little crazy here on Friday, probably Thursday and Friday, so I'm going to give you a couple reminders or a couple notes that might help. If paying by cash, please try to bring exact change. That is going to be very helpful. We will run out of money, smaller bills first. So, please try to bring exact change. Number two, have payment ready, whether it's cash or check or money order, before getting in line. We'll have a table available to assist in filling out your check, some pens and perhaps even some clipboards if necessary. Number three, the busiest times will be, of course, right when we open, lunchtime, folks coming over on their lunch hour, and then right before we close. So, if you could sort of come in in between those times, it'll be much quicker for you. Number four, we will have two lines open. We have two part-time clerks that work the window for the treasurer's office, and they usually don't overlap each other, but on Friday, they will both be here all day, working both those two windows. So, that'll hopefully make things go a little bit faster for you. We suggest that you, instead of paying by check or money order, that you drop your payment in the secure outdoor drive-up drop box. It's right outside the window. There's a camera on that box. Obviously, we're in front of the police department, so it's very secure. Those payments will be accepted all day Friday up to 3:30. After that time, the lobby will be open till 4:30, so you'll have an hour to come inside. But we're going to close that at 3:30 to allow time to grab those payments and process them by the time we close. When we do empty that box the last time, we'll place a note on that box informing you that the payments are now late if put in that box. So, they will have the 3% fee automatically assessed when we take them out of that box. So, please, if you're coming after 3:30 on Friday, please come into the building and make sure that you get your receipt stamped from the clerks here behind the desk. Number six, if you're paying after 4:30 Friday and want to know what your total is with that 3% fee, there is a QR code that we had added to your bill envelope, return envelope. So, on that payment envelope, if you scan that QR code, it will take you to the website where you can put in your address and look and see what your total is. Or you can access that from our city website. Just go to cityofallenpark.org, navigate to the treasures page. There's a link to BSNA, which is our payment platform, and on the left, navigate to the screen, on the left navigation screen, I'm sorry, you can click on that specific link, and that'll take you to the BSNA website where you can enter your address to see the amount owed. Or you can go automatically, just Google BSNA, follow the link, and then enter your information from there, which will be your full address. Or you could call us, and if we're available to answer the phone call, we'll answer the call and get you your total that way. Lastly, please be kind, the clerks, they're going to be very busy that day. I'll be on hand all day Friday. If you experience any issues or if you have any questions, ask for me, and I can assist you. If I'm unavailable, if I'm at lunch or step away, Ms. Lovelock, our deputy clerk, she has many years of experience in that department, and she'd be happy to help you. And this, of course, is so we don't hold up that line. So, if there's an issue, just ask to speak with one of us, and we'll come out and we'll take care of that for you. One last item, the city is closed on Monday in observance of the holiday, so you won't be able to reach our offices until Tuesday morning if you have any questions or concerns regarding taxes after Friday. And that is all I have for you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Astheimer?
Ms. Lovelock, did I forget anything?
No, I think you did pretty good. Like I said, I'll be here all day Friday if I'm available.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you very much. And we'll move on to the administrator's report.
Good evening, Mayor, council, fellow residents. This President's Day, it's going to be a full house. We're having a hockey tournament at the ice arena again. We'll also be hosting the regional finals for the high school hockey on February 22nd at 7:30, and also, for the first time ever, hosting the state quarterfinals for the hockey on March 1st. The hockey drop will, puck drop will be at 7:00 PM for the quarterfinals. This will be the first time the city of Allen Park is hosting those games. The library also has two new reading programs, Hundred Books in a Year, which already has ninety-five adults registered, and Hot Reads for Cold Nights, which has a Once Upon a Crime theme that will go through March 28th. Three people from the fire department are going to the mutual aid ice rescue training on Bell Isle on February 19th. My understanding is they're training with the Coast Guard for this. That'd be pretty good for them. Our firefighter engineer, Clark, passed the Fire Institute class. Our firefighter sergeant, Hamilton, is attending the Fire One course. Sergeant Moore in the police department is attending the Staff and Command School over the next ten months. They go one week per month for ten months. Staff and Command is an intense program that helps supervisors improve their skills and potentially get to the chief status, hopefully. Our area is also anticipating four to seven inches of snowfall from Wednesday through Thursday. Due to a potential snow emergency, we would advise residents to not park in the streets. If we do call a snow emergency, it'll be on our ticker, it'll be on our website, and also our Facebook page. And most likely, the police department will send it through to the media. I want to acknowledge the following anniversaries for some employees. We have a water employee named Mark Wielenberg. He's hitting his twenty-five years this month. We have a fire engineer, Christopher Clark. He's hitting his ten years this month. We also cannot forget, we have a director of human resources, Tanya Whitehead, who's reaching her five years this month.
Yay!
And that's all.
Thank you. Along with that, snow, I don't know if you mentioned that, please be mindful and look out, and even if we don't put out a snow emergency, you still might want to keep your vehicles off the street, because, you know, some people don't know how to drive in snow, and I would hate to see somebody's car get dinged or done it, or lose a side view mirror because somebody lost control, and it can happen quite easily. So, as soon as we, if we get word from the police department, we will get the word out. Thank you all. Does anyone have any questions of the city administrator on his report? If there are none, I will take a motion to accept and file.
Motion.
Motion by Ms. Nick?
Second.
Second by Mr. Valerius. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We now come to public comments. I have four minutes to speak. All we ask is that you provide your name and the street on which you live. Please do not provide your full address. And the only other thing we ask is that you be civil.
Okay, I'm Pat McParland, forty-four-year resident of Dashur Avenue and a lifelong member of Allen Park. I'm going to start with a brief history followed by a request and then suggestion. Between 1999 and 2006, much discussion took place between the city of Allen Park, the Allen Park School District, the residents of Allen Park regarding the future of the property at Lapham School site. On May 9th, 2006, the city council passed a motion, number 060509159, to retain park space on this Lapham property. On November 9th, 2006, the school district submitted a plan to expand its original offer. It involved a land exchange with the city. On November 14th, 2006, a public hearing was held to vacate city property that was used in exchange to allow the city to retain a hundred and thirteen by a hundred and forty-foot park space, sixty foot of which was city property that was non-buildable due to underground infrastructure. The school district would now be able to market the property with no loss of revenue as a result of this exchange. December 16th, 2006, a site plan containing the park space was prepared by True North Surveying to formalize the agreement reached by the city and the school district on behalf of the residents. In the fall of 2024, and using the site plan from 2006, seven lots were sold to Livonia builders. Recently, ground was broken on the area earmarked as Tot Lot. In a conversation with the builder, he said he was aware of the Tot Lot and intended to honor it, as he thought it would be of value to the new development. After further investigation, he was told that he could build on a fifty-foot section, but not on the remainder. Now, for the request. The builder said that the remaining portion of the Tot Lot, approximately eighty by a hundred and thirteen feet, was of no value to him, as he couldn't build on it, and would be willing to deed that to the city for use as a public park space, as originally intended. I am making a cross on behalf of the residents that the city accept this offer and preserve this green space. It is a non-renewable resource. Please act swiftly and accept his offer. It's very generous. I'd also further like to suggest that the city unvacate the city property vacated in 2006, and consider two options. One is to improve it by adding a public sidewalk as a walk-through between Horga and Hanover Streets, which otherwise will be blocked by the new development. Or number two, swap it for two back-to-back lots to create a walk-through and a greenway approximately in line with the current Lawrence Street, and provide a sidewalk on either of the outer edges. The remaining green space would provide usable and much-needed park space for the current residents, as well as the expected thirty-five new families. Option two would also offer access to the above and below ground utilities that run through this area. Be very happy to answer any questions or meet with anyone who'd like to talk about this further. Thank you very much for your time.
Good evening, city council, citizens of Allen Park. Couple of minutes ago, I asked any of you to give us citizens, oh, by the way, it's Ray McGuson Quant, I'm sorry. I asked any one of you to allow the citizens to get one extra minute. I've been asking for this for quite some time. I have no idea why. Why don't you give the citizens the time to come up here and speak? What is so hard to change the agenda, which you are allowed to do, any one of you, to give the citizens, not myself, one extra minute? What is so hard? You all have been brought up here by us. You've been voted in by us to take care of us. And I'm talking about taking care of the citizens of Allen Park. The citizens of Allen Park who pay your taxes. Yes, I'm getting a little mad. I haven't talked this way in quite a while. This is about us. It ain't about me. So, with that, let's go a couple ways. AT&amp;T now is coming through the front of the streets. The comment was made, well, look at our back lots. Look at our telephone poles. Tell AT&amp;T to get the God-blessed old bod cables to hack off of those damn poles. Why are we allowing them to keep the same garbage on our poles? Tell them to pull them off. Tell the God-blessed Comcast and everyone else that when they come in and they cut God-blessed lines, to get them off the poles. Come in my backyard. There's a telephone pole there right now with seven friggin' dang cut lines hanging in the air. Is there a problem here? Really and truly? Wake up, people. Yes, I'm mad. There's no more citizens coming behind me. Thank the gentleman who just came up here. What is so hard to work for us? I just paid my taxes. Yes, I did. My taxes are paid in full. Is there a problem to give the citizens one stinking extra minute, when we used to have five at the beginning and five at the end? I don't come here and do this all the time. Get the frigging trash containers off the street before the snow hits. I don't care if my neighbor puts them in the street or not. They've been told, do not put those containers in the street. I don't know if progressive doesn't understand what our ordinance is or not. Why do I, as a citizen, got to come up here and say this every single month? And I sure hope that the citizens that don't know how to get their cars off of the road for the snow removal, I sure hope, and I will say this, get the ordinance officers out there and start giving them tickets. Maybe they might wake up and say, you know what? And yes, people, you can come after me. And I'm not throwing you people under the bus. I'm throwing your neighbors under the bus who don't care that they park in front of your house and they destroy three lots that aren't going to get plowed, three! I know I'm past my time. Thank you very much. Wake up, people. Thank you for my time. Thank you extra for my extra time, too. I got my extra one minute. Thank you.
Hi, Mary Jane Kittlehand for. I wasn't going to come up today, so I apologize for my notes being a mess. I want the public to understand that they should actually go and view some of the meetings from last year that concerned the clerk of the city. May 28th and June 25th are two good ones to start with. He was very unbecoming, very attacking, was allowed to go up to forty to forty-five minutes ridiculing and attacking myself, another resident, and three council people. On the ethics board, I had asked for Father Tim to be stepped down, because I knew he was friends with him, but I was guaranteed that Father Tim would be fair. Come to find out, Father Tim started out his speech saying how wonderful Mike Mizzi was and how great friends they were, and he voted, of course, on Mike's side. And then it came to Lynn Kittlehut, who gave another fabulous speech about how great Mike is and how long they've been friends. Both those gentlemen should have stepped down. Just to let you know, on the ethics board, you shouldn't be friends with somebody that you're viewing. I, myself, had prepared a very thorough packet on him, and the comments up at the board, as we were waiting for it to start, were, oh, I just flipped through it. I scanned through it. I didn't read it all. It wasn't taken serious at all. I do know Mr. Ed Plato did do a full report that I'm still waiting to read and that you do not have in your packet, that states the state of mind that Mr. Mizzi is in. He did explode at one of the first meetings, where he was asked to tell his side, and instead of telling his side, he attacked me. Also know that though the vote was three to two, every single one of them unanimously suggests that Mr. Mizzi do get help. I do pray and hope that you do send Mr. Mizzi to get the mental help that he does need. The man does seem to be in need for it. He's constantly attacking and violating things. I know that you think it's a personality thing, and, oh, he's this name-calling, but it's very unbecoming of an elected official, and an elected official should not go after residents or other council people, and not be allowed to for them unattended. He did. I'm not saying that Mr. Mizzi is a horrible person. I don't know him personally. I just say that his conduct was bad, and it's quite obvious that he does need help. I hope that you do see this, and you do ask him and somehow mandate him, or I don't know how you would do it, but tell him he needs to get the help, for I would hope, at least, I would say, I don't know, I'm not a psychiatrist or anything, you might want to get him evaluated and then go from there, but having people I know in counseling, I know a minimum of six months is usually what's needed. And then finally, what I would ask you to do, if you would not mind, I do believe that we all deserve a public apology, just like Mr. Councilman Schleck had to do on his ethics board thing. And for Mr. Mizzi not to show up, that's fine. Maybe he's ill today, but when he is back, I would appreciate a public apology for the way he treated me and accused me of things that were false. Thank you.
There's no one else coming forward. We will close public comments and move on to the consent agenda, which this evening consists of claims and accounts in the payroll report. Motion, please. Motion. Motion by Ms. Nick. Second by Mr. Valerius. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Repair bills again. Resolution, resolution regarding the Board of Ethics recommendations. In this instance, the Board of Ethics report, I will read. An ethics complaint was filed against Clerk Michael Mizzi and sent to the Board of Ethics for consideration. The board met on December 13, 2024. All board members were present, along with Attorney Ed Plato and Deputy Clerk Angela Lovelock, who took the minutes. Following deliberations, a vote took place on a motion to find Mr. Mizzi to have violated Article I, Ethics, Section 1.01, parentheses, six, principle of congeniality and productivity. The motion to approve was passed with three yes votes and two no votes. A second motion was made to recommend to city council that Clerk Mizzi attend anger management personal counseling sessions. The motion was unanimously approved. Legal counsel advised the following for counsel to consider. Based on the finding of the Ethics Board that Clerk Mizzi had violated Section Six of the city ordinance with regard to treating people, quote, "with courtesy and respect", unquote, the council has the option to, one, censure the conduct of Clerk Mizzi, which is simply a formal disapproval of his conduct, or, two, simply receive and file the formal finding of the Ethics Board. B, with regard to the recommendation for counseling, the option given was that a motion be made to provide counseling at the expense of the city. The city would reimburse Mr. Mizzi for copayments, or amount not to exceed $150. So, we will begin with Section A. A motion can be made to either censure or to receive and file.
I'm making the motion to censure.
Motion to censure is by Ms. Nick. Do I have a second?
Support.
Supported by Mr. Schleck. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Take a roll call. Councilman Barr?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Nick?
Yes.
Yes. Councilman Schleck?
Yes.
And Councilman Lloyd?
No.
I have it. Second, with regard to the recommendation for counseling, may I have a motion to provide counseling at the expense of the city? With an amount not to exceed $150, which would cover copay.
I'm going to make the motion.
Ms. Nick? Supported by Mr. Barr. Comments or questions?
Okay, I just want to say that this isn't anything personal. I know I was attacked quite a bit, but I do think that Mike does need help, and he does need, and I was at all those meetings for the Ethics Board, and at the end, all five people did say that they thought he did need help, and they were very concerned about his mental health and getting him some help. And so, I do believe that he needs to get some help. And again, this isn't personal. I just, I want to see him get well. So, that's why I'm making a motion. If we can help him as a city, and it's only $150 for copay, that leaves all barriers out, so then he is able to go, in case he didn't have the money. I don't know what his situation is, but I really hope that he does go and get help if this is passed. Thank you.
Any other comments? Hearing not all, in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That's, do you want a roll call again? Councilman Barr?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Nick?
Yes.
Mayor McLeod?
Yes.
Councilman Schleck?
Yes.
And Councilman Valerius?
No.
Thank you. Just everybody keeping in mind that this cannot be mandated by us, it's solely a recommendation, and it's an offer that's being made available. We will now move on to Resolution Two, to award the Manor Avenue Payment Replacement Contract to Zuniga Cement Construction in the amount of $1,303,718. us what this is all about.
So, as you're all aware, we picked Manor Avenue from Leslie to Moore to be part of our, we'll call it millage. We don't actually have a millage any longer. It's a permanent part of the charter amendment that we completed, but for safety, we'll call it millage. That funding was put out for bid for that service. I wanna say we received ten bids, and Zuniga Cement came in as the lowest bid at $1,303,718. The next highest bid was $130,000 more. So therefore, we had a meeting with Zuniga, the engineers, myself and Mr. O'Loughlin and a couple other people related in DPS, and found them to be a good concrete company with recommendations from Warren, Dearborn, and some others of that. They have not been in this area, a lot of people haven't heard of them, but they have been in business for a long time. They do have a paving machine that we required in many other avenues, and we have not heard anything negative about them. So we're asking for recommendation to award this bid to them. On a side note, because the bid came in so low from the estimates that we thought we were gonna pay, that is why we added another block of mayor to the program, because the money that is in that charter has to be spent on roadwork. So this does not reflect that in that price, because our bids do say we have reserved the right to add or subtract in our bids. This is regards to how we bid it fairly, if you're wondering.
Does anyone have any questions?
Uh, you said the bid came in really low, so did they give any places where they have done work?
Yes, Warren, Dearborn, Westland, I think, Mount Clements, Madison Heights, that, they're mostly been doing work up that way. But they've been recently putting in bids in the Down River in lower southeast Michigan side. And when I say the bids came in low, we asked our engineers to give us an estimate. Best way in business to figure out what religion we can even afford to do, and their estimate was 1.8 million. We didn't have a single bid of the ten bids at 1.8, so we kinda overestimate, which we prefer. I'd rather go in overestimating that way. If the bid comes in even closer estimate, we're not caught off guard.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Wonderful. Paved some more roads. Okay, now we come to closing comments, and we'll start with Mr. Gressheimer.
I just wanted to add a couple more things to my earlier comments. When you go, if you wanted to look up your property tax, as I've suggested earlier through our city website, you follow, you go to the Treasurers tab, which is the very last one 'cause it's alphabetical. So you go to the Treasurers tab, you click on that, and the very first item on the left navigation bar is, it's going to be for the, uh, looking up that. It's called Online Property Payment slash Inquiry and Property Tax System. So when you click on that, you're gonna be brought up to the BSNA page. At the very top, you're gonna just type in your address, just your street number and your street, and then you hit the search bar. A box will come up about halfway down, and you will see your address there, your full address. When you click on your full address, that's gonna take you into another system on a different page. This BSNA website houses not only our tax information, but also information from the billing department, utility bill info, and the property information, just basic property information. The second tab is the tax information tab. That's the one you're gonna wanna click. And that will give you the current balance on your winter or summer property taxes or both. So that's that. I just wanted to fill you in on that. And then the last thing I wanted to mention was the ACH taxes. We're starting scheduling those on the 13th, so on Thursday, so please have, if you've signed up for ACH, please have funds for your winter taxes or summer and winter taxes, whichever it is, in that account, please, on the 13th, or scheduling on the 13th to be pulled out on the 14th, but just to be safe, I'd make sure you have the money on there on the 13th. And with that, thanks for coming out. God bless and good night.
Thank you. Um, let's see.
Oh, wait, pardon me, one more thing, if you'll may. I wanted to say, I welcome Mr. Lob, our new finance director. I wasn't at the last meeting. He just started on Monday. I think he's been here ever since. He hasn't left the building, so say a prayer for Mr. Lob as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, and, let's see, I'm on the right chart here. Mr. Slack?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. once said that injustice anywhere is a threat to justice everywhere. Tonight, we are taking, or took, an important step to uphold the integrity of our city While it's unfortunate that the clerk is not present to address this matter, the decision before us was not about personal disputes. It's about ensuring that all elected officials upheld the same standards of professionalism and respect to the people of Allen Park that they expect from us. Over time, there has been actions that have been disrupted by the decorum of this council, emails sent to the city employees criticizing votes, public displays of approval and disapproval during meetings, and inappropriate actions against council members have created unnecessary division. These are not the responsibilities of the clerk's office, and they do not reflect the kind of leadership our residents deserve. Therefore, let's just be clear about this. This is not just political squabbling. His actions target council members and their families. It was unethical. It was wrong, and it should have been condemned. And he did so after his anger over votes. Anger is fine as a citizen, but council should not receive that anger in official capacity of clerk. I also wanna make it clear that this recommendation was made out of concern for Mr. Mizzi and his well-being. This is quote directly from Mr. Provost. In fact, he went on to say, "I cannot emphasize that is enough. We are universally concerned for him." When I was censured last year, every single one of my colleagues on council, with the exception of Mr. Marcos, because he was absent, voted to hold me accountable. I did not whine about it. I did not lash out. I took responsibility. I accepted it, asked for forgiveness, and did the work to move forward. But tonight, not all of us chose that direction, as that is your choice to make. I believe your vote definitely sent a message to the community. It said power matters more than principle, that personal lines matter more than ethics, that standards of conduct are optional, depending who are. I don't think that's right. To those who stood for justice tonight, I thank you for the vote that you chose. Mr. Valerius? Then, uh, well, at the end, we move on. We must move on. We're here for the city, not ourselves. Thank you.
Let's see, Mr. Boyd is absent? Ms. Nick?
Okay, well, um, so, last meeting, I know Mr. Blevins asked us to go out and start meeting different businesses, so I went over to the nut place on Allen Road, and I could not believe how many different items that they had in there. It was overwhelming, and I did buy quite a bit, and I kept telling you, I was really shocked at how low the prices were. I walked out of there with two big bags, and it was less than $20, so, um, so if anybody gets a chance, I definitely would go over there and check that place out. And then in the mail the other day, I did get, and I think many of us did, it was like a free bund cake, which I haven't had a chance yet to go up and visit them, but I hear the lemon bund cake is really good, so I'm dying to try that. And then, this is something new, and I know it's out a little ways. It's not until June, but the Historical Commission is gonna be doing an indoor flea market at the Parks and Recs in their ice arena. And yes, there will be no ice on the floor. No, we've been asked that. Yes, we'll be gone. They're ten-by-ten spots, and they're only $25, and it's for two days. It's for Saturday and Sunday, which is not until June 21st and 22nd. I know that they've already been getting people, I think they have ten to 15 already. So if you guys are interested, anyone interested in that, you know, please get ahold of the Historical Commission. So, and then, an incident that happened to me today, my youngest daughter called me up, and she was in a panic because all of a sudden sewer was coming out of her toilets, her sink and everything. So I immediately called the city because I knew it was a pipe, but I didn't know if it was city-related or if it was the home. It ended up being the home. So thanks to Tom Murray over here, he told me some questions to ask different plumbers. And so we had a couple people come out, and I just wanna tell the citizens, make sure you get several people that come out. The first one that came out told us she had to dig up her yard and everything, and that would have been $9,800. We had another person come out, and again, thanks to Tom, he told me the right questions to ask. It only cost us $350. They had to snake it. He said, make sure they snake it first. Sure, we did, and it was the roots. And he was able to get everything out. Everything's working fine again. So I just wanna make sure that you get several quotes and several people to come out. That was a big difference in price. So, and with that, I hope everybody has a happy Valentine's Day, and I yield.
I agree. I'm at about 14th as tall, yeah.
Fantastic. I'm blown to Tax Day.
Mr. Valerius?
I just wanna congratulate the, uh, those sitting employees celebrating anniversaries. Never mentioned by our city administrator. And as far as the personal attack on me based on Gary Slack's comments, which he claims we wanna work together as a unified body, and then goes on a personal attack based on the way I voted, uh, he's, that's his right to do so. Last, last I checked, last I checked, uh, what Mr. Mizzi did was not a crime, a convicted crime. It was an ethics violation, which the Ethics Board reviewed. They came back with their findings. We voted the way we voted, but it was not a convictable crime. So, uh, I just wanna leave it at that. Again, I wanna thank everyone for coming out tonight, and God bless.
Mr. Barr?
Okay, um, pretty much concur with what's been set up here. Last week, I was at the Bund, uh, what was it called? Nothing Bund Cake up on Outer Drive. It was myself and Ben Hughes representing, you know, the city, and, uh, Ben was the economic development, because it's not in the DDA. You're right about the lemon cake. It's good. Um, uh, let's see. I've also attended with the mayor, the Down River Community Conference meeting on, I believe it was the sixth. Very informative. Let's see. Again, I wanna do a traffic safety portion. Please slow down on the Allen Park streets and heed the traffic controls signs, basically the stop signs. Hanford and CCOT are becoming raceways. Um, thank you to everybody that came up. I will talk to Mr. McFarlane. I'll talk to you a little bit. Congratulations to the milestone employees. And this year, or this week, again, a shout out to the Water and Sewer Department. They've had quite a few leaks in the system. With that, Happy Valentine's Day, and, and I yield.
Well, I spoke with Mr. Marcos, who would like to be here, but he's hoping to get his back fixed once and for all, and be relatively pain-free. But I wanted to bring in some of Dennis for you, and so he was kind enough to provide me with some of the daily thoughts.
I just looked it up.
Well, I don't know if yours are the same as his. Today is Learn Your Name in Morse Code Day. It is also, and I don't advise us at this time of year, Step in a Puddle and Splash Your Friend Day. Might wanna save that for sometime in July or August. What we have had to go through with some of the ethics things that have arisen, I will tell you, is not a pleasant chore for anyone, under any circumstances. And we all have taken this very seriously. The fact that the Board of Ethics did not come through with one clear recommendation made it very difficult. I had made the statement earlier on that whatever council chose to do, I would support it, and that is what I did. I heard from several other council members who could not be present, and the voting might have been different had they been here, but they weren't, and so that's where we're at. And probably what was done is appropriate. I do wanna speak out about Board of Ethics. The individuals on that board, regardless of who they may or may not know, and you're never going to find anyone in a city who doesn't know other people, because the Board of Ethics must be comprised of residents. And therefore, like most people in Allen Park, they've been here for quite a period of time. And I will tell you that I would not question the ethics or integrity of any of the individuals on that board, no matter how long they've known anyone or their friendships. And just for clarity, there were two names that were brought forth, and I will tell you that not both of those individuals voted no. As a matter of fact, one of them voted yes to censure. And therefore, again, I would not question individuals, any decision that was made, I believe was above reproach, and I have complete faith and trust in their ability to be objective. I view myself in that capacity. I have often made this statement, and I will live and die by it, that I don't care whether you're my best friend or you're my worst enemy. If you have the qualifications that are needed to perform a job or a function, I want you in that job or function. It does not matter how much I like or dislike you. Please all stay safe, drive reasonably, and yes, please stop at stop signs. It's a habit. It's a habit you can make yourself get into. I have stopped at stop signs at midnight with no one else on the roads, because it's a habit. And once you start doing differently, you're going to forget that it's noon and not midnight, and you're going to roll through something. For your own safety, for others' safety, please, please, and drive the speed limit. God help you if you hit a child or someone's pet, because you're gonna have to live with that the rest of your life. And with that, I will ask for an adjournment. Happy Valentine's Day. Make sure you pay your taxes on time, because Tim will get you. Motion, please.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Barr.
Second.
Second by Ms. Nick. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. We are adjourned at 6:40.